Twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Let us stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. May be seen.
All righty, closed session.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
I move that the Board of Supervisors enter into a closed session meeting for disposition of real property per section two point two thirty-seven eleven A three of the Code of Virginia as amended, for contract negotiations per section two point two thirty-seven eleven A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia as amended, legal matters per section two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight of the Code of Virginia, and personnel per section two point two thirty-seven A one of the Code of Virginia. So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go with closed session.
Board of Supervisors convening in a closed meeting on July 29, 2021, pursuit to an affirmative recorded vote on the motion to close the meeting to discuss personnel, legal matters, disposition of real property, and contract negotiation in accordance with Section Paragraph 2.2-3711(a) dot one, in comma, 2.2-3711(a) dot eight, dot 2.2-3711(a) dot three, and 2.2-3711(a) dot twenty-nine of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section Paragraph 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was convened in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, number one, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings required requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meetings was convened was heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. Before a vote is taken on this resolution, is there any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of number one and number two above? If so, identify yourself and state the substance of the matter and why, in your judgment, it was a departure. Here in no statement are called a question. Mr. Palin, I certify. Mr. Bellows?
I certify.
Mr. Lee?
I certify.
Mr. Larson?
I certify.
Dr. Westbrook?
I certify.
The certification resolution is adopted, and this meeting will take a break until 7:00 PM. I'd like to call a meeting back to order, but before we start, I would like to say this: We had a tragic loss of two of our members here in the county, Mr. Wardell Carter and his brother, Moselle Carter, in a tragic accident. And Mr. Carter, Wardell Carter, is one that when we first started our Parks and Rec program, he was the second one to take charge and got that program off of the road and established very well, and he was very involved with our Boys and Girls Club and helped get the wire going, too. So they were very instrumental here in the community and working with our youth and our public, and we've suffered a great loss. So I'd like to take this time just for a silent meditation for those two young men. Thank you. At this time, we're going to go into our public input session. You have three minutes. Anyone on the floor that wants to talk, please come forward to the mic, state where your name and your district that you represent. Anyone? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm George Bott, District One. It looks like we're going to have to storm here. A couple of months ago in May, I think it was, I requested accountability in the form of a budget for all federal and state COVID and cares and related kind of funds. And I called my representative, Mr. Larson, last week, and he assured me I would have that, and I was given that today, at least a piece of it. And that satisfies me, but I don't know if it satisfies the other citizen in the county. Charlie, I don't know if he got a copy, for example. But it's public funds, and it should be visible to the public, perhaps on the website, as is the other budget, so that would be very helpful. And concerning this, this is a list of expenditures from the first tranche, apparently, the million eight fifty, one forty-two. There's other tranches to come, apparently.
Yeah.
And there's a list of expenditures. What is the process, for example? You don't have to answer this tonight, but I'm interested in the process to determine who gets the funds, for example. How is that deliberated? Is it your body? Is it in public here during the evenings, once a month? I don't know what that process is, and I'd like to know. Later on, in Ms. Stevens' salaries and invoices, she has an accountability care, it's fifty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. I don't know whether that's a two martini lunch or what that is, but it needs a little more clarification there so we can raise our comfort level.
Probably cleaning supplies.
Could be. Who knows? There are bigger numbers in this expenditure, you know.
The larger grants were approved by the Board of Supervisors on a case-by-case basis at a public meeting.
Oh, thank you.
So that's...
I must have been dozing off for a second. Appreciate that, I'll stay awake. Second, briefly, respectfully request when V-Dot briefs that they talk about the ferry a little bit. We hear the major issues about maintenance and those kind of things, but the day-to-day operations are important. Today, I was riding the ferry back home, there was a car in front of me from District of Columbia, older woman and a younger woman, they held their cellphone up the whole trip, guess they were taking video. They got off, turned around, and brought it back the other way. So they're here for the enjoyment, some of us rely on it for transportation. I appreciate to know monthly what's going on, what the issues are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. The lighting's not too good in here. Sheila Kearns, First District. I saw the article in the paper today about the Waller Project. I have a few comments about solar, and I have three minutes?
Yes.
I timed this to five, so I'm going to edit as I go here. Waller Project, 2,400 acres, Mary Point is up to 2,900 acres, so we're looking at 5,300 acres, or about 8.3 square miles of Lancaster County, which is only 135 square miles. So we're looking at solar development of about 6% of our total landmass. The majority of this land is forested, and that current forested land is providing the slowing of storm surge and runoff and erosion. The sensitive environment area is located 100% in the Corotoman watershed, it covers wetlands, headwaters, and steep sandy soils. I'd like to stress the need to determine suitability of this land for these projects. There are established initiatives and guidelines to protect these land characteristics. The August 4 meeting with the Virginia Natural and Historic Resources with the Northern Neck Planning Commission meeting in Warsaw takes place. The Natural and Historic Resources Department is composed of five agencies, don't need to list those, but they're all agencies that provide guidelines for these type of projects and this type of land. Additionally, and specifically, we've got the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. The current comprehensive plan has recommendations and guidelines for housing development. I would hope that our comprehensive plan would also talk about solar development. We've got very specific guidance on expectations for setbacks and how homes are clustered and open spaces provided in order to protect our wetlands, and I think the same thing needs to be done for solar. We really need to balance the use of our natural resources in exchange for using it for renewable energy. Thank you. We really need a governor in place to limit this development, either by acreage or by megawatts of power. It's needed to prevent the county from being overrun by solar development. I looked at a couple other projects around the country in scale, but I'm going to run out of time here, but I want to say the world's largest battery energy storage system is 300 megawatts, and it's located in California, and it's housed in an abandoned industrial power plant, so it's just reusing an existing industrial place for it, rather than having it located 50 megawatts across from our high school. The land type and the scale of these projects poses a great environmental risk to Lancaster County due to location, and the land required is two times the national average. Is that me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. Well... Well, I think...
Make a closing statement.
If I may?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that the proposal for this is using about nineteen acres per megawatt. National average is eight per megawatt. The county has the authority and the ability to abide by the greater guidelines established by the state, federal government, ensuring both responsible development and protecting our natural resources.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Costello.
First of all, I don't know why we've changed from five minutes to three minutes, but the public really should have more time to present their comments. Now, I understand it's be informational session next week, or next month, by Waller or people making the application. And there'll be no public hearings, no comments. I would like to have that informational thing made available for all the people throughout, and not just on a thing, but it ought to be totally out there so they can get involved. I know they had an open house last month, which was the same night as we were here for the Board of Supervisors, roughly from three to six. I guess they put out notifications to people in that area. I didn't know it, and I know I follow most things, as you well know. And I would have been there, others were there. We need to have more transparency, more openness, and I'll echo the thing about the comprehensive plan. We've been talking about it and need it. We've been working on a comprehensive plan, and we have yet to get anywhere on it that we can get solar discussed and into it and get people out. You're going to be hearing more from a lot of people. This is a big thing. You don't want to set a precedent where this becomes a thing. And as far as Waller, they're using a hundred and thirty-one megawatts. That's practically all of the transmission lines will take. Here, if I remember their thing, they added the lines down three fifty-four and on to make it a hundred and seventy-three. So they're using up all of it. What's Dominion going to do? They're probably going to go to two thirty. Gentlemen, well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I hope you take it to mind to get the public more time to thoroughly discuss things with you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Anyone else from the public want to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Charlie Forrest, I've been here very much in the last year and a half, District One. Everything's been said tonight is true. What the lady said, we really need to back up on some of this stuff that's been done. I always had a meeting at the school with Dominion, proposed what they want to do. And if Dominion wants to do it, they're going to do it. But it was not one person in that room that was full soul. We really need to watch what's going on in other parts of the state, in other parts of the country, and make sure that if we do this, we did it right. It's, you know, when you take this much land, and I'll farm, and y'all know where my farm is, and all the solar is going to be up in that area, Alphanta, in that area, a lot of it. When you take all the wildlife that this solar is going to take out, you know, three thousand acres willows, deer, turkeys, and stuff going to go. They're going to come to the farmland that's, you know, because they got to have food and everything. And I'm all for wildlife. Same way with the watershed, you know? We need to be careful as far as keeping the rivers clean. When you, you know, we got, in the days, Rappahannock, right? They was talking about the Cowhand Swamp, Mohan's Run Swamp. All that runs into the Rappahannock River, the Curtailand, and then the Rappahannock. We just need to be really careful how we allow these projects to go in the county. And I don't, you know, y'all know my feelings. I would like to thank Bellis, I talked to him today. I talked to Mr. Palin today, and I really appreciate y'all listening to me. And I just hope that if we, you know, we need to really think about this seriously. There's a lot of people in the county getting upset about it, and I think you're going to see a whole lot more people in the county if someone's to know what's going on with it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrester. Anyone else from the public want to speak? Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to comment during the public session? If so, raise your hand, and we will allow you. No one online? Okay. Thank you. Public input session, old business. Dr. Westbrook?
I just have a question about how we're doing as far as short-term rental revenue.
The FY twenty-one total collected from the transient occupancy tax was fourteen thousand, one hundred eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. You know, the first year we had it enacted, we collected a hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-nine cents. So we've gone from that level to fourteen thousand, one hundred and eleven.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's it? Okay. Virginia Department of Transportation? Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is David Beal, Virginia Department of Transportation. Just going over the July report. Hopefully, you have that in your packet. We've completed our primary and secondary mowing. So all the roads in the county has been mowed the first round. And we've completed the shoreline project in Bertrand. Hopefully, you got to see that, it looks really good. We've continued to repair washouts and shoulders from the rainstorm on the eleventh of June. And then we fixed potholes throughout the county and repaired some small slopes and also responded to various work orders. Upcoming, we have a few crosspipes to replace. The surface treatment schedule, which those routes are at the bottom of the report, will start in the coming week. And we're continuing to fix shoulders and washouts and respond to additional work orders. We're also beginning to start the second round of mowing. It never really stops. So we're starting to mow the primary routes again. And just as a reminder, we're planning to pull the ferry out of the water the day after Labor Day for a sixty-day contract so it can be painted and dry dock. The plant mix schedule will begin late August. They're finishing up in, well, they still got a couple weeks of work to do in Northumberland, and then they're moving into Lancaster to put hot-mix asphalt on a section of Route Three, on two sections of Route Three. And the Cape Seal schedule is almost complete. They only have a few miles of line striping left to do. So I'll be glad when we can check that one off. On the second page, really the only update which I can give, which isn't updated on your report, I just found out today, the Smart Scale project, the Turn Lane in Kilmarneck on Route Three, that schedule is going to be advanced. I'm not ready to tell you how soon, but it will be significant. Will be a significant advancement. The funding was slated for FY twenty-four, and I think you're going to see a significant advancement in that schedule, and I'll get that to you as soon as the schedule's updated.
So it might be in my lifetime?
You look good, just hang on. That's all I had, so anything you'll have for me?
One comment. I would just like to commend you on the work and investment you did at Belle Isle State Park, and I don't know if you could speak to that at all, or if you are aware of it.
I'm not sure what we did either.
Well, VDOT made it a sizable investment to meet their TMDLs across the Commonwealth, and we were lucky enough here in Lancaster County to be one of the recipients of that money that flowed to Belle Isle State Park where VDOT put a bunch of abutments in and shoreline retentions and living shoreline type of investments. I think it totaled like one point six million dollars worth of investment. So if you haven't seen it, go check it out, and I think it's something that you should be proud of, and...
Well, thank you. I'll stand here and take credit for it. I'll look into it to get more information, but thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yes? Okay, yes, sir.
I've noted the ditch work that you've been doing on three fifty-four, and it looks like some on two oh one, and I appreciate it and want to thank you for that. It also looks like you've been working a, what looks like a power grader out there on the shoulders, which also very helpful. So again, thank you for all of that. I do have one area that, and it's very close to my home, so I see it every day, and that's Cove Colony Road. The asphalt is breaking up there in places, and it's just only going to get worse, make the job more difficult. So I would ask your attention to that. And thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one other comment?
Um, it's come to my attention, I don't know if we can do anything about this, but between Irvington and Whitestone, once the bridge ends, there's, like, the shoulder there completely disappears. And if there's any way we can work on that to kind of make it a little bit more shoulder, because there's a lot of bike traffic and stuff that comes down that corridor now. And when they come off the bridge into that section that is basically the county property between the two towns, there's essentially no shoulder at all, at all there. And so if we can do anything to grate that over or put some gravel down or something there to try to improve that, it would be beneficial, because when you come out of Irvington, there's a lot of space, and then you come across the bridge, then there's none. And then when you get back into the town again, it widens up and there's space again. So it's...
We've pretty much addressed most of the damage from the storms and all the shoulders. And we're, I'm hoping to, so the last stretch will be from here to Whitestone, if we can get some of that done, too.
Okay.
And I think we're probably going to start mowing first of the week, so that kind of protects the lane. We've actually had to borrow some resources from another candidate, just shoulder worked out. We'll work on it.
Okay.
Let me ask, you're going to start the mowing, will there be a trash pickup this time?
No, sir.
No?
We're going to do it ourselves, and then the last time, maybe.
Yeah, we'll pick up the trash in the entire county, the last cycle in the fall.
The last cycle?
And then it won't be again until the spring? I think I asked at some point if we could find out what this actually costs.
Yeah.
And if the county can foot another, pay for another cleanup during the winter time when it's not being picked up, and it really looks bad when there's no grass around. So I think it needs to be done four times a year. And I think if we have to supplement that through some kind of agreement, then this board needs to look at doing that, because this is a major problem. It's trashy for the community, it looks bad. And if we can stay ahead of it as much as we can, then I think we need to pursue other avenues that, because we pursued a lot, and none of those have been successful. So cleaning it up is successful.
I think you've already given me that information on the cost.
Yeah, I think it's around seventy-five hundred dollars, this pickup.
Then I would like to see us moving forward with having four a year. And if we have to sign an agreement with VDOT to pay for two of those, then we need to work, get that agreement in place. Because there is a revenue sharing thing with VDOT where communities can share the cost of things and get more out...
You could probably just put it on your secondary six-year plan as a line item, and then we can just use it from there.
Do you have the manpower to do that? Or we'd be taking you off a job to do that?
We would just use our, we used a contract, so we would just use our contractor to do it.
Well, we've already adopted a six-year plan for this year. Can we bring it back up and amend it?
You can add things to it anytime you want.
Okay, then let's, let's...
We'll do that for the next meeting.
All right.
Do we need to go through another public hearing to add things? I have to check.
I'm not sure if I have to check.
I have to check.
Time after time, we hear about people cleaning up roadways from litter, and a week later, it looks exactly the same. So we can try it, but...
People, as soon as you clean up, people come right behind you, throw it right out there.
That's right. So I think we might...
Exercise a utility.
Look at that.
All right. Anything else, sir? Y'all have any more? All right. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Broadband Authority, Mr. Bean?
Afternoon, gentlemen. Basically, I'm just, y'all should have a paper included in your packet that just kind of points where we've gone, what we're doing, and everything else.
Yes, sir.
Can you bring us just down the mic so that it's...
Is that better?
Yeah.
Got you.
In response from the public's questioning of what, since we weren't in the big paper write-up for the groundbreaking that Dominion and APB did together, just want to let everybody know, we're scheduled for Phase Two. And we found out that once the Phase, once Phase Two comes in, they're going to go after batty money, which has been also opened up to people who have already won the ARDOF awards, because that's been changed a little bit, the wording on that and how they're handling it. So we'll be part of that. Let's see. The joint project between us, Matthews County, who is else? It's Matthews, Middlesex, and Caroline with Atlantic Broadband. We're at, we're going to submit the draft plan to DHCD and get their approval to move further forward on that. With all the increased competition we're having coming into town with broadband fiber with Atlantic, APB, ABB is now starting to look at expanding their fiber to cover areas that might possibly, I think they're worried about losing. So that's working out for us in the long run, one way or another. Also, with the BTS wireless project, they've got sixteen houses up and running. They've had to do some things about sending it back into town to the water tower, then coming back out this way to get through dense tree pop coverage and everything, and elevation issues. They're slowly adding more houses. I haven't heard a report for this week yet on how many were added. I know they're working with some of the people in Eagles Landing to get that all back up and running good again. And from the last time we talked to them, they were more hopeful than what they had seen from BTS. So that seems to be moving more in a positive direction. What else we got? We were going to go after the NTIA grants, but you have to have a private partner for that. And for it to be submitted by August, we couldn't find anybody that was willing to work that fast at this point. So we're just holding off on that and going to wait for the next cycle. And we've officially cut ourselves down from two meetings a month to one. So that's about where we are across the board. Any questions, gentlemen?
I just have one quick question. Has there been any movement on the franchise agreement with Atlantic Broadband?
There is, communication's been fired back up again between us and them.
Maybe a good time to start negotiating again?
Right. Well, there was a meeting that was had where their actual, their head guy came down, and he basically looked at, what is, Bill Newberg Board? And looked at him and said, why aren't these done? Like, the money's there, why are y'all playing around with this, get on it? So that was, that's kind of where we got that new fiber coming from ABB's side of the house. So... Any other questions, gentlemen?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bean.
Y'all have a good night.
All right. Okay. Consensus docket?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consensus docket.
Motion has been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion has it. All right, consideration, got that? Yeah, consideration docket? Salaries and invoices?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve invoices in the total amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixteen cents, of which the total payroll, three hundred and thirty-one, eight hundred and six thousand, twenty cents, for a total of one million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents, of which capital improvements, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight, fifty-four. CARES Act money spent, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents.
All right, y'all heard the motion? You're ready to vote? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous vote. Okay. Takes care of consideration. All right, board reports. Gentlemen, y'all have any reports? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lee, Mr. Bellis, and I had the opportunity...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lee and Mr. Bellows and I had the opportunity to attend the PDC meeting, which that now resumed on a quarterly basis up in Warsaw. And at least for me, there was, I learned some things that were interesting. There were things that were covered or written up, the minutes of the executive meeting, and that involved Mr. Bellows, and he may want to comment on that. But at the regular meeting, Dr. Kennedy talked, gave us a lot of information about what was going on at RCC, and one of the things that I think that is helpful for us to know about is that she stated that last year, when they were ready to start the year and they looked at their enrollment, it was down ten percent from the previous year. And she said they were on track now to be down another ten percent. Now, that's fairly alarming to me, and I hope maybe there's something that we can do, that we can get out in the community. Community college is really a tremendous benefit. I myself was able to go through two years for much less cost and transfer credits right across the board. It'd be different if the universities didn't take the credits, but they do. And RCC's doing a lot of good work as far as workforce-type programs and that sort of thing. I've got a flyer that they handed out. I'll just pass it down. If you're interested, maybe, you know, I'm happy to give it to whoever y'all wanted if we can get a copy made. But it lists all the programs that they've got going that are not related to degrees, they're related to supporting the workforce. For example, they just started a commercial driver's licensing course, and, you know, when a person finishes that, they will have a CDL. But I think anything we can do as a board, anything we can do as individual citizens within the county to boom the, boom the PDC, excuse me, boom the community college, we should do that, because that's alarming to me, what amounts to a twenty percent downturn in enrollment over the last two years.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Anybody? County administrator's report?
I got two things, Mr. Chairman. The first thing is, I'd like to introduce our new building inspector, Mr. Brett Dawson. Brett, stand up so people can associate a name with the face. Brett started with us on July the first. He is the definition of on-the-job training. We lost our building inspector on, he took another job. His last day was June the eleventh, and then, of course, our building official resigned on the seventeenth, and his last day was July the first. So Brett's been on-the-job training, but he's learning very quickly, and he's doing a great job for us, and I just want you all to know who he is and put a name to a face. So Brett is with us, started July the first, and doing a great job.
I'd like to say welcome aboard, Brett. All right. I came by his office one day, and I saw him in there. He was working hard. I talked to him. He said, "Well, it's a steep curve, a learning curve there." But he was happy, you know? He had a big smile on his face, so hope you enjoy your employment here with us.
The second thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is, and I've talked to several of you, and there's an article in the paper today, the Coast Guard is planning to reduce the Milford Haven site to summers only, and there's some concern about that as far as responding to emergencies. I know Air Emergency Services Chief Matt Smith also communicated with me earlier this week and asked if we could write a letter, you know, opposing the reduction, and in talking with the majority of you, I think the board feels the same way. So I just found out that August third is the deadline to submit comments, so if it is the board's wish, I would ask that you authorize me to draft a letter to send to the Commandant of the Coast Guard, a copy, our Congressman, and our two United States Senators, as well as our delegate, Ranson, and Senator McDougal as well, opposing this reduction at Milford Haven.
I put, I move that we draft, that we give our county administrator the authority to draft a letter opposing of what has been, what has been said here. All in favor of that? Or any discussion? Eyes, all right. All disgusted, all right. Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay. Anything else? Nothing else? Wow, okay. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Meeting adjourned. All right.